Okay, we're coming back into open session. We had an executive session which requires us to go to a different Zoom meeting and now we're coming back here. So we're returning to open session 7:00 PM. This is the school committee. The meeting is being broadcast on Mottertown Cable, so you can view it there. You can also, if you have a question or comment that you want to make, you can text it to 857-330-2278. And this meeting is being recorded and will be available on the WPS website and also on Mottertown Cable will have it as well. The first item back on the agenda is the annual school committee reorganization. So every year in January, the school committee by its policy manual has a rule to do a reorganization process which involves basically the election of officers and then approval of subcommittee assignments. So this is the year we're kind of in between elections. We didn't have an election this past fall, so there aren't any particular changes in terms of the members, membership on the school committee, but we still do the reorganization. So the first item would be the election of officers for the school committee and the, as the meeting is called by the senior member, which would be me, and so we'll start with the chair position for the school committee for this calendar year. So the floor is open for nominations.
I'll nominate John Portz for chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Kendra Foley to continue to serve as the vice chair for the school committee.
Amy, gotta do one at a time.
Oh, I thought you said any other nominations.
What I meant, I'm sorry. We'll do that one in a moment. Any other nominations for chair? All right, seeing none, I'll close the floor for nominations. I appreciate the support of my colleagues. Look forward to working with you again for another year and lots, lots of challenges in this coming year. I'll have a few comments about that in the chairman, chair's report later in the meeting. But we do need to have a vote, a roll call vote for the position of chair from my head and myself. Amy?
Sure. Lindsay Mosca.
Yes.
Kendra Foley.
Yeah.
Lilly Raymond Reed.
Yes.
David Stokes.
Yes.
Mark Sideris.
Yes.
John Portz.
Oh, president. Amy Donahue.
Yes.
Thanks again, thanks for that support. Next would be the position of vice chair. Amy, you had a nomination there.
I would like to nominate Kendra Foley to continue to serve as the vice chair to the school committee.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, close the floor and we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay. Lindsay Mosca.
Yes.
Kendra Foley.
Yeah.
Lyndy Raymond Reed.
Yes.
David Stokes.
Yes.
Mark Sideris.
Yes.
John Portz.
Amy Donahue.
Yes.
And then the third position would be the secretary. Go open the floor for nominations for secretary.
I nominate Amy Donahue.
Fine, second.
Sorry.
I do such a great job on my checklist that you guys all want me to be the secretary.
And you switch it up so it keeps us awake. I mean, come on.
That was John's idea.
You're on top of it. Are there any other nominations to, for secretary? Seeing none, we'll close the floor for that and do a roll call. Amy, you get to call your own roll.
Nice. Kendra Foley.
Yeah.
David Stokes.
Yes.
Lilly Raymond Reed.
Yes.
Lindsay Mosca.
Yes.
Mark Sideris.
Yes.
John Portz.
Amy Donahue.
Yes.
All right, thank you. The other item for reorganization would be the subcommittee assignments. And I sent an email around about that and there were no, no one asked to be put on a different subcommittee. So I think what we'll do for this, the coming year is just continue with the ones that we have. But let me, let me read those off just so everybody's clear what the positions are. The school committee has five, what I'll call standing subcommittees that kind of continue from year after year. Athletic Subcommittee is chaired by Amy Donahue and members are Lilly Raymond Reed and Kendra Foley. Budget and Finance is chaired by Kendra Foley and members include Lindsay Mosca, David Stokes. Buildings and Grounds chaired by David Stokes and members are Amy Donahue and John Portz. Curriculum is chaired by Lindsay Mosca and the members are Lilly Raymond Reed and David Stokes. And then the Policy Subcommittee is chaired by Lilly Raymond Reed, members are Amy Donahue and Kendra Foley. So is there a motion to approve those assignments?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, second, sorry.
Okay, discussion, questions, comments? Okay, roll call.
Lilly Raymond Reed.
Yes.
David Stokes.
Yes.
Mark Sideris.
Yes.
Kendra Foley.
Yeah.
Lindsay Mosca.
Yes.
John Portz.
Yes, Amy Donahue.
Yes.
Thank you. So those will stay the same. I also note here on the, a couple other assignments, for collective bargaining negotiations, we, we still have two unions that we're working with, the SEIU for the custodians, food services, and I'm working, I'm the kind of liaison for that. Administrative assistance, Amy Donahue's the liaison for that. Couple of others, liaison roles, CPAC, Special Education Parent Group, Lindsay Mosca is serving there as the liaison from the school committee. Cable Access Board, David Stokes. We don't currently have someone on, for our liaison with EDCO. The Wellness Committee, Amy Donahue. We note there is School Building Committee, which is actually, those are appointments by the town, myself and Lindsay Mosca, and then also clearly Mark Sideris as well. And I do have a question there, Anti-Bias Coalition, which we haven't had someone as a liaison before, but you know, in talking with the superintendent, we thought that might be a, a good connection because it's a, very much a community oriented group. And so it seemed that that might be appropriate to have a community, a school committee liaison there. And so we don't have, I don't have anybody at the moment, but if anyone's interested in doing that, let me know and we can do that assignment, you know, in the coming weeks or so. Okay.
I'm happy to do that, John. I mean, I'm already going to the meetings.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine, Lilly. Put you down. All right. Next would be actually public forum. So we have a public forum at this point and we also have a public forum at the end of the meeting. This is an opportunity, if someone wants to speak from the public, there's a three-minute limit. It's not, it's, it's an opportunity to make comments, it's not to really engage in the dialogue, but if you have comments that you want to make about any school issues, see is there anybody, actually only, I have one question.
You have a hand up, John.
Mary Russo. Mary, go ahead. Can you unmute?
I did not have my hand up.
Well, you didn't?
I had it up earlier, I put it down.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Public? Okay, we'll close the public forum. Next would be an update on school reopening. And Dr. Galson's going to speak a little bit about an agreement that's been negotiated with the WEA, the Mottertown Educators Association, around a variety of reopening issues. This is a negotiation process that's been, really since August. So it's been kind of a long process. It's, it's one, I just, as a, as a way of background here, has to deal with a lot of kind of details and specific issues about kind of the reopening process and the role that educators are playing in that. It's, it's, it is being, it's, it's the superintendent, I served, I was on the negotiating group, but the superintendent and her team and the union president, Deb King, and her team did the negotiations. And so it's not a, an agreement that is being signed or approved by the school committee, nor is the teacher membership approving it. It's being, as a, as an agreement between the superintendent and the union president. Those are the two signatories to this, to this particular document. But it, it's, it's a good way to try to kind of put on paper what some of the key elements are, some of the key relationship issues that have come up during the various, various reopening processes. Dr. Galson?
Excellent, thank you. I just have a couple of slides tonight and, so the first one is definitely thinking about the MOA. And I would say that this is in its final stages. We are actually in the process of exchanging signatures, so we're not yet completely finalized and really that is more on my side. I had a few questions that I needed to have answered. So I think at this point, we're good to go, but since it's not signed, I don't have the actual document to provide to you this evening, but we're, we're almost there. I would say that, that we definitely started meeting in July and we met on a very regular basis throughout the time till December. And I said at the last school committee meeting that really when all was, was said and done, this wasn't like every time we met was a negotiation session. A lot of it was just a lot of information going back and forth and clarifications about policies, procedures, you know, protocols that we were using. They would bring up concerns, we would bring up concerns. So really it was an ongoing dialogue, I would say, between the WEA and the school administration. I think all told, we were about 16 strong between the school administration and the WEA. We have representatives from all levels in those negotiation sessions. So again, I think that's why we engaged in those dialogues around, you know, school reopening. In the end, the following areas were the areas that we, that we worked on through negotiations. We talked about leaves and accommodation requests. There's a lot of discussion about the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, which has to do with leaves and accommodations. You know, we're currently in our hybrid model, so we've worked through most of those, those requests moving forward. We did a lot of discussion around facilities. Certainly, as we've talked about in the school committee, you know, issues of making sure we had appropriate air exchanges and that we had air purifiers and that we had screens on our windows and, you know, making sure that our facilities were safe. I would say no matter what, throughout these negotiations, safety was the first and foremost issue on the table, was really discussing how to keep our staff and our students safe. So health and safety protocols around maintaining six feet of distance and making sure that we had the appropriate PPE for our staff. Teaching and learning, we talked a lot about, you know, people coming in earlier, you know, and, and stiffening them for the time that they had in prior to the rest of the people coming hybrid. We talked about what it would be like if you were teaching remotely in terms of, you know, setting up your, your, your station or where you're going to be teaching from. We talked about grading and, you know, posting grades and just a variety of different issues around teaching and learning. We, we talked a little bit about, we negotiated a little bit about evaluations, primarily about timelines more than anything else, given the fact that we had a little bit of a later start with the hybrid, pushing back some of the timelines. Last year, when we first moved into our remote learning, we basically suspended the year in terms of evaluation. So, you know, we're picking up again, but that was, you know, another area that we discussed. We had a lot of, you know, items around just general thoughts and one of the biggest ones, which, you know, I think people are really curious about in general is, you know, meeting again, meeting regularly, especially around the mid-year point, which is about February 8th, in terms of if there's any changes or anything that we're doing differently, we've agreed that we will sit down together and work on any of the changes that we have within the district. And the last one was the role of the instructional assistants, the IAs, just being really clear about what it would be if you're an instructional assistant in the time of the pandemic and either remote or hybrid. So, you know, that's, that's what we worked on. You know, I'm really pleased with the outcome and I think that in the end, once again, as I said, I think safety was the driving force behind the agreement and I think that we've gotten to a place definitely that promotes safety first and making sure that we're, we're all on, in the right page to keep moving forward with our education in the pandemic. So that was what we did and I'm, like I said, very, very appreciative of all the work that went into it.
Okay, let me open up, let me, first off, I just wanted to thank the superintendent and all the central office folks and all the educators from the WEA for, for a lot of hours put into this process and I want to thank them for all their work and recognize them for that. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Lindsay has her hand up.
Lindsay.
Sorry, I'm having trouble finding the buttons I need right now. It looks surprised, I finally found what I need. No, I, I, you know, echo what John said and, you know, I really appreciate everybody's efforts in, in working on, you know, you know, this agreement and in getting our kids back in school and in finding ways to make this work in such a challenging circumstance. You know, I feel like where we are now in terms of, of knowledge of, of how this virus works and how to be in school is just light years away where we were in, in September. And, you know, where we are in terms of the, the state of the pandemic doesn't feel much better than we were in April last year. You know, it's just kind of gone in a, in a backwards direction in essence, you know, it's, it hasn't been going super well in the state. You know, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, with this agreement in place, what kinds of ongoing and background conversations are happening in the schools, you know, regarding possible changes to the plan? You know, like I just, you know, I know on the one hand, numbers are really bad, you know, with, with the pandemic. It's not looking good in Massachusetts or the country. But, you know, on the other hand, you know, I think that there's just, there's also a lot of fatigue and, and a lot of parents are just seeing increasing detriment to, you know, children being home and, you know, we all want our, our kids in school and I'm just kind of wondering what kind of future planning is being thought about even if it is not necessarily nearby.
Certainly, that is something that we started discussing as a leadership team prior to our, our break, you know, looking at primarily the schedule to figure out if there's anything that, you know, we could be doing differently within the schedule. Certainly, I've heard the, the, you know, from the parents and the families about wanting, you know, potentially, some parents, some families, not all, potentially a little bit more time within the day. Certainly all areas that we're considering, but like I said before, you know, February 8th is kind of that, that moment where if we were going to do anything different with the schedule, I think that that's when we would start transitioning in, although there has been some discussion, especially at the elementary level of, you know, even prior to that, you know, are there some subtle tweaks within, not, not coming in person, but the actual day. But, you know, that's, that's something that we certainly are, you know, in the process of, of thinking about and, and discussing. We'll get to, after this discussion, I have a couple of slides about a survey that we're going to send out to families on Wednesday. And I think that that's going to be really foundational in terms of, of getting that feedback from our families around, you know, how are they finding the experience that we've got going? I know the fatigue is there, but, you know, what sort of things are, are causing the most fatigue, but what sort of things are also some of those positive benefits too? So I think it's good to hear from the families and students, so we're going to survey students as well as, and staff. So we'll do a kind of a full comprehensive survey out to gather that data before we, you know, I think we'll inform our decisions moving forward. So that's really vitally important. And then the other, I'm just stealing all my slides. I mean, the other point is testing. You know, we are, we're, we're doing really well with our, our surveillance testing in terms of our numbers. You know, I think there's certainly a big uptick, uptick between the 20, when we left on the 23rd and now, our numbers have gone up in terms of people signing up for testing. I do think that that is essential if we're going to make any kind of changes. It certainly has to be based on metrics that we see in our schools every day. And the only way that we can know, you know, what the, what the virus is doing within our schools is to test. So, you know, I think the state is starting to come along a little bit with that, but I think that, you know, we're, we're ahead of that curve, but now we just have to get, you know, just more participation in that testing so that, you know, if we're finding that, yes, there's a storm out there with COVID, but, you know, the seas are a little calmer within our schools, then that helps us to make either different decisions or at least stay the course, which is, as you said, with the numbers going up, you know, how do we, how do we maximize the time that we have within the buildings? And we're only going to be able to do that if we know that we're safe. Long winded answer.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Kendra?
I just had one question and this kind of piggybacks on what Lindsay said. And maybe you'll get to this when we talk about the next topic, but in terms of the MOU, do you feel like, well, there are things that need to be renegotiated if and when scheduling changes do happen? Because, I mean, obviously that's something that I would advocate for as well as looking at what's the next step? How can we get kids in more? You know, where do we go from here? And will those, will there be aspects of that that have to be renegotiated?
So I think that that's, again, when I talked about general, that, that ongoing conversation with our WEA Association, it's, it's essential, you know, that we, we work together to figure out what our next steps are. And the one, the one thing that, and I, I'm going to share the concern is lunch. Generally, you know, it's, it's bringing kids together and even with six feet of distance without masks is a little bit more of the, the question than the concern. So, you know, we started to think about what might we be able to do. The high school has been, I mean, their numbers are, I mean, Joel's not here right now, but, you know, I think one-third of the students are now remote. So their lunches are very spread out across the building, so I think we would have to think a little bit about how we would stay safe without masks on. And especially moving forward, again, we're learning a lot about the virus and I think that that's, that's just one of those areas that, you know, when we move into the spring, you know, as we, like I said, February 8th and then even we have that vacation in February, you know, we start to head back into the spring and we're able to go back outside again, I think that's going to open up a lot of opportunities in terms of snacks, lunch, et cetera, not within a very confined space. That's, I think we all know, that's, that's the issue more than anything is being in a space without masks on. So we're, that's probably the one area that we would want to work through the most with our, our, our union. So, did that answer that question?
Yeah, thank you.
Lilly?
And to piggyback off of Kendra, also just to make sure that parents know what they're signing up for, because I think, you know, to the point of if we are going to make any shifts or any changes to the schedule, you know, if we're going to be resurveying parents on Wednesday, I think it's important that parents know if they're making a shift to their preference, that they know what they're signing up for and that, you know, if we are thinking about adding lunch or if we are thinking about changing the length of school day, that also needs to be communicated to parents, that they're making a fully informed decision, just as much as educators are. You know, so I think that that's a concern also is that, you know, we, as you've mentioned, Dr. Galson, we are still learning a lot about this virus and I think there's a lot of, you know, concern, especially with this new strain going around and people's preferences might shift if the school changes its system. And so I just, I also want to be mindful that if we're going to add time to the school day or include something, we also need to give families the ability to change their minds, not just teachers, but also give parents and the community kind of a heads up on that, so that we're not just pivoting. Thank you.
And, and I would just say that, again, we have not, I mean, we just started having a conversation around what my February 8th bring. And we know that the number one thing is finding out from our families, those who are currently remote, do they want to stay remote? And those that are currently hybrid, might they want to go remote and vice versa? Because the staffing implications are, are our first, number one challenge, just to see where we're at. And then from there, then I think we'll have a better sense of, you know, what might our next steps be. But we, we, I don't want to give anyone the impression that, you know, we've made any decisions or thoughts even about what the future might look like. I'm just saying that lunch is one of those, those true barriers, I would say, right now, especially at the elementary level, just given the fact that our two swing spaces are not hospitable for, you know, cafeterias, we just don't have them. So that's just a, a challenge that comes with new buildings that are going to be, you know, great, but right now that, that's a constraint that other districts are not facing.
I would, I would just add to that, that I think part of the reason that it, it makes sense to, to have this document at kind of the level of the superintendent and the, and the WA president as opposed to the school committee, is because I, I do think there'll be adjustments and changes to it as, as time goes on to, to accommodate the change in schedules and, you know, what happens. And the other thing I would add to it, just thinking on the negotiations and I think part of the reason that they were successful, the WEA was, I think, very open and willing to, to talk, but, but I think also on our side, on the administration side, having all five principals there added a level of, of kind of knowledge and, you know, understanding of, of how everything impacts within each, each school building. I think that was actually a very important ingredient to putting it all together. Any other questions or comments? Lindsay?
I just wanted to make a, no, no, it's just a really quick follow-up to kind of what, what DeeDee and Lilly were just saying, is that I think the last time, way back in the summer maybe even, I don't remember when it was, that we kind of surveyed families about like preferences and interests and how things are going and stuff, it got confusing for some families, thinking like they were voting for a choice or that like that meant that this is what was going to happen. So I think we just had to be really careful about separating, choosing a different model that you want to engage in, what information goes with that versus how is it going right now? And I'm sure that you guys are doing that, but this is just kind of bringing back like a little bit like, some people kind of misunderstood what the surveys were for in, in, for multitude reasons way back in the beginning of this. And so I just wanted us to be careful about what we're asking and how that information gets out there, that's all.
Maybe I'll have you take a, a sample of it and you can tell me what you think.
We could do that.
Yeah, that's a good point. All right, thanks Lindsay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, you, you kind of transitioned into the next item, which is, which is really kind of a current status and I think you wanted to talk a little bit more about that, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we last saw each other on the, the Monday before vacation, so it's not like, I mean, we've been out. So there isn't much to update you about the current status of what's happening within the buildings. I just wanted to, again, point out the fact that we're going to be surveying families, students and staff, students in, I think, grades and Dr. McGiddis, maybe you can clarify this, I think it's three through 12. Does that sound right, Teresa?
Yes.
Okay. So, and we're going to ask, you know, not, it's not a lengthy survey, but certainly trying to get at, you know, how do people find the, and we'll ask them whether they're remote or whether they're, you know, in hybrid, you know, what do they think of the learning model, the student learning time, you know, are they, you know, synchronous versus asynchronous? The academic workload, are we finding it challenging, too challenging, too easy, you know, social emotional status, you know, a check in to see, and not just students, but staff as well, like how are we doing with the stress of being in a pandemic education system? Preferences for the second half of the year, to your point, we do need to start gathering and I think at this point, it wouldn't necessarily be binding, but at least we can get gauged, like, you know, how many people are thinking about moving. It's going to be a Survey Monkey survey, so I'll send out a link and it'll be done through Survey Monkey and we're hoping to get them back by the 15th of January. And then last but not least, will results, the results will be reported out to the community and the school committee at January 25th meeting. Yes, that's the Monday, the 25th?
Right.
Yeah, okay. So that's a little overview of this survey. Then this is just a, a quick view of the metrics right now in terms of the town. You know, we are still in the yellow and that's primarily because of our positivity rate, not because of our cases per 100,000. As you can see, they're at 49.5, which is pretty, I mean, it's pretty high. The state is still designating us as yellow, but I certainly think that that's, that's a, a pretty good concern. And our positivity rate, although it's gone down, it's still, you know, hovering, you know, above four. So, you know, we think that obviously the, the virus is, is in our community, you know, we, we obviously have to think about what that means for the future, but as we know, we've taken the three days off this week, not off, remote learning, it's definitely not off, students are learning and doing very well, but we're not in the building so that we can test our staff. We had approximately 160 staff members come today for testing and our students as well. Today we had well over 350 students come. Our school nurses are in the gym, they're testing, you know, students based on their buildings. And hopefully tomorrow, when we go into cohort B and the second half of the high school, we'll get another, you know, good robust amount of people coming through so that we can gauge in our school community what the prevalence is of COVID before, you know, we say we're ready to roll or if we find that there's, you know, certainly a lot happening within our, our schools, that, that might be something different. But I think that testing is going to give us a sense of where we're at with the school community. And, you know, we don't have necessarily current cases right now because we were on vacation. We did see a little bit of a surge at our high school and our middle school level, just from reporting from families. So, you know, certainly it's, it's something that... So, you know, certainly, it's, it's something that makes you just want to make sure that we are safe moving forward. And I can't disaggregate that, whether they were remote students or in person, because it was over vacation, so those numbers might be higher just because of the, the learning model that the kids are in, but that's, that's where we're at with the metrics. But I do want to say, like I said before, I'm, I'm pretty pleased with the numbers of students that are now currently signed up for the testing. We're 352 staff members, which is approximately 90% of staff that are in-person with students, very high. And we have 317 Watertown High School students signed up, out of the 430, I believe, students that are in-person, which is about 74%. That's, that's great, that's almost 75% of the high school students have signed up. 573 elementary students, which is 66%, but if you recall, the last time, we were below 50. So I think as people are hearing more about this, and, and this, you know, potential surge that we might be seeing, I think parents are certainly signing up more readily for testing. And last but not least, we have 322 middle school students signed up, which is approximately 72% of the students that are in-person. So I know there's a lot of questions and thoughts about, you know, should this be something that we, we actually make mandatory for our students? And that's something that we can consider, especially if the numbers really spike. But I, I'm really pleased by the increase that we've seen, and I think it's because students see each other, and they know that it's not the very long swab, it's just the very short one, it's easy enough to do, so why not do it? And if you're out there listening, I would certainly, if you're not being tested, I would certainly encourage everyone to sign up their students for testing, it's, it couldn't be easier. Looking at our positivity rate across the board, you know, 4.4 is what we're at in the town, we're at .15 in terms of our, our students and staff through the surveillance testing. So, you know, I'm not saying anything that, you know, students are, I don't know why that is, I think, you know, our, our staff are, are being very careful, they, you know, are taking the warnings very seriously about wearing all their PVE and, and taking all the precautions, and I think our students are appreciative of being in school. And I was talking to one of the school nurses who kind of talked about that today as well, that the students are, are really very disciplined in terms of wearing their masks, and, you know, really just doing all the right things, washing their hands. And I think that we didn't know what that was going to look like, but I think our, our data is, are showing that, you know, potentially, our, our measures are, are really working within the schools. Vacation was a long time, there's a lot of probably social gatherings and, and families, so that's why I think it's really important to get this round of testing and to see where we're at. And that's pretty much what I wanted to share with the community this evening. We're going to meet again in three weeks, and I'll be able to provide you with a lot more information about the survey, and about, you know, what's happening within the schools, and any update that's necessary at that point.
So this week, remote, maybe you already said this, in terms of the remote pattern for this week?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so today, Tuesday and Wednesday are remote days, with the intention of coming in person on Thursday and Friday. If, if for some reason that needs to change, I would, you know, obviously let families know, hopefully by tomorrow. That would all depend on, A, if we had, if we see a, a lot of COVID within our, our staff or our students, or B, if the tests don't come back, you know, given the fact that there's so much testing going on. Our testing partners have been less than 24 hours very regularly, but sometimes, when they get a maximum load, it takes a little bit longer. But I'm, I, we haven't seen that happen, but if it does, that would be another reason why we might hesitate and wait until the following Monday. But right now, we're scheduled to come back on Thursday.
But so Thursday and Friday would be back to the schedule from before the holidays?
Yep, the hybrid, yes.
Right, so for, I mean, so at the high school, Fridays are remote anyway?
Yes, so it's just one day in for one, one group, but it was the opposite of what we had after Thanksgiving, so it balances out at the end, but it's a full two cohorts at the elementary.
Okay. Questions or comments? Something, just, there was one note in the, in the chat there, just going back to the survey, Lily made the reminder that, just to clarify, that all parents will receive the survey at all grade levels, correct?
Yes, yes.
And students are from grades three through 12?
Yes.
And then staff is, staff, all staff?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, just three to 12 for students, that's the only difference.
Okay, for all parents. Questions or comments on the, on the presentation, to kind of update? Thoughts? I think it's, the, the, the testing level is great, I mean, it's really, it's great that it's moving up. That's really nice. And especially the high school, which I think is the one, in some ways, I'd be kind of most concerned about. And if that's moving up, that's great.
Yep.
Someone, uh, let's see, Kendra, I know you had your hand up.
Kendra.
Or Amy?
Yeah, sure, do you want me to go first? Um, so I guess my, my question's a little bit of confusion around my part. So over vacation, I know that there were a lot of positive cases among some of the students in Watertown. So I guess my concern is, those students could have tested positive, I guess, almost 14 days ago, correct? So if they're being tested again, which I guess you're not supposed to be tested in 90 days, but let's just say they are, and that shuts down a cohort, are, are we going just based on a positive test and not when they could have been exposed, or when they could have tested positive? I guess that's my question, does that make sense? Because I know that you would test positive again, even if you were, even if you already did your 14 days, you know what I mean? You're not going to get a negative test, you're going to always get a positive test.
Do you want to take this one, DeeDee?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, um, so we are having our nurses, our, our testing within the Watertown Public Schools is asymptomatic testing, and it's also not for anyone who has tested positive in the past 90 days. And we're being very clear about that, because we don't want our pool testing for our students to be affected by folks who we know had COVID, and who have, you know, since been, you know, not, they're not still shedding the virus, they're not still contagious, but they're going to still test positive, we've learned that. So those students are not supposed to be coming for testing, and same for staff. If you've been positive, you really should not be coming back to the asymptomatic testing.
What, on the flip side, Kathy, for that, if it's a sibling? That's my concern.
Yep, so, so siblings, again, we also are not offering testing for people who are supposed to be quarantined. So if you are close contact, I, to siblings, you know, parents, spouses, you know, anyone living in the household, we don't want you coming to our testing for that purpose, especially, I think it's especially important for that pool testing, because, you know, you, you may influence, you know, a, a pool, which means, you know, maybe 10 people are thinking they could be, you know, positive, whereas there's a high likelihood that that person who's a close contact, you know, is going to be positive at some point, symptomatic or asymptomatic. I don't know if we've been as clear about the, the close contact, particularly with the, the student testing, we haven't been very clear about if you've tested positive within the last 90 days, please don't come.
Yeah, I mean, that's written everywhere. I, I'm, my whole thing was the close contacts, I'm not sure that was delivered clearly, or not, not by any fault of anybody, but just because people wouldn't know, you know? And they want to do the right thing to have their child tested if they were in a home with somebody that was positive. So that, I guess that's, yeah, so, I, I just have a, I, I just, my fear is that we could see a lot of that this week, but whatever, we'll be positive.
Yep, and I, I think that this week is going to be rough, and I think that you're right, we need to work on the messaging there.
Thanks. Kendra?
I had a, a question. For this round, the pools are not in cohorts, is that accurate? Since, since they weren't in school together, there's no, like, you, you wouldn't shut a cohort down necessarily for this round only. Moving forward, it'll be by cohort, is that accurate?
Yeah, and, and that's one of the reasons why we had an additional day, as opposed to Thanksgiving, where we only had the two days off. So what we found with, as you know, with Thanksgiving, is that, you know, we found out too late, because we had a cohort come in on a Wednesday, that there was a positive pool, so that made us, I mean, that, that was a mistake that we learned pretty quickly, don't, don't do, if you're going to convolute the pools in terms of out of the cohorts, you got to have enough time to get the testing back, so that you don't shut down a school unnecessarily, which is why it is that we have the three days instead of two. But yes, moving forward, starting next week again, testing will be done by cohorts, especially now that we have such a robust number, you know, it's, it's, it'll definitely be by homeroom or by cohort, in the elementary grade homeroom.
Okay, so a, a positive test will not necessarily shut down a cohort, because they're not pooled in cohorts, for this week only?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then I had one more question. I'm so glad to hear about the increases in percentages at all three levels, that's really exciting. I, I do think it's such a valuable tool, and we're, it's such an investment the district's making, I so appreciate it. I do wonder if there's a moment in the next week or two that we, we say to families, it's an opt-out rather than an opt-in for testing? And you can very clearly opt-out, there's a way to do it if you feel very strongly that you don't want it, but I, I wonder if that will help us capture as many families as possible for student testing? I just think it's a really important tool to keep kids in school.
So the, the, so maybe? The, the opt-in issue is, I mean, I'm sorry, the opt-out issue is that even if you opt-in, I mean, if you end up like not, you know, passively being in, the parent still has to have signed the consent. So we certainly, you know, we could do an opt-out, and then cull out anybody who didn't fill in the form, and send them the consent form, and say, well, here you go, here's your consent form. And that might be a, an actually a good way to do that, but we can't test somebody without consent, so we'll just have to think about that. But that might be the solution for doing an opt-out and consent. So definitely something to think about, or, you know, or if we find an increase in the, you know, the, the virus, or we end up with the variant, or whatever it might be, it might just become, if we want to be in school, that's something that we have to do, but to be determined shortly. Hopefully, we're riding the next couple of months, and then we're going to see a, a different end, but, you know, right now, I think we have to do whatever we can to keep it, keep each other safe, and keep moving forward with our, our in-school learning.
All right, thanks, Kendra. Just to follow up. DeeDee, I'm seeing in the chat that we're including a question about why you may or may not be participating in the testing?
Yes.
For parents, so that might be informative as to why, before we take that next step, to kind of be the opt-out as opposed to the opt-in?
Yep.
Understand what the rationales are that people are willing to share with us.
Yep.
So.
With a link right there for the testing, in case they just didn't know about it.
Right, yeah, great. Even better.
No, I think that, that's, it will be very informative to find out what the reasons are. I think that, again, I think that's why we're seeing more and more people signing up, because I think a lot of people thought it was the very invasive, you know, serious test?
Yeah.
Which, you know, I wouldn't sign, I hate to say it, I probably wouldn't have signed myself up for that if I had to do that. You know, short nasal is, is easy, so easy. And the school nurses today, they were sharing just how great the kids are, they just, it takes two seconds and they're, they're done. So it's a whole new world. Why not?
That went out to the nurses today, they were amazing.
Yep. Yep.
Good, good. Any other questions or, on this, on the current status? Anything else? Okay, let's move along, action items. The first one is, is a permission for a child of a WEA member to attend the Watertown Public Schools. This is a policy we have, it's policy JFAB in our policy manual, which allows the, a parent of a, excuse me, a teacher, allows them to request that their child attend the school. So we, this comes up periodically, so I'll ask the superintendent to provide the background information.
Yep, excellent, so, I mean, pretty much is, it's exactly what you just said. This is, this is one of the benefits of, of teachers, for teachers through their contracts, to be able to send their children to the Watertown Public Schools. You know, throughout the years, we've had, you know, various people who have elected to do this. Currently, we have a teacher who, I believe, is actually in the attendee side of the meeting this evening, who has requested to have her child attend the Lowell Elementary School in grade two, and that is something that we've talked to the principal, it's always on a space-available basis, and right now, there's definitely space available, and so I fully support this parent being able to, and teacher, being able to have their child attend the Lowell Elementary School. I don't know if you want to hear from the parent, but she is out there as well.
I don't know if it's necessary, but is there a motion to approve this request?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Lindsay Moska?
Yes.
Kendra Foley?
Yes.
Sorry, Lilly Raymond Reed?
Yes.
David Stokes? Mark Sideris?
Yes.
John Portz?
Amy Donahue?
Yes.
And that's approved.
Can you just say one thing? I just want to, you know, just highlight and thank the staff member for, you know, having the faith and, and belief in our school system to bring their child here, because I think that says a lot about what we're doing, especially at the elementary level, so thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Approval of minutes, we have the minutes from our last meeting, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? A roll call?
Kendra Foley?
Yes.
Lilly Raymond Reed?
Yes.
David Stokes? Mark Sideris?
Yes.
John Portz? Lindsay Moska?
Yes.
I almost called myself, no, yes.
Okay, minister approved. Under reports?
Forgot the approval of gifts, Sean. The approval of gifts before that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you know, I, I didn't have the latest agenda, I didn't want to, sorry. I think we're, oh, I got them here, okay, you're right. So we have three gifts to approve. $7,000 from the Denise Suovo, Suello Charitable Foundation for the Martha Fitzpatrick Scholarship Fund, $21.28 from PB Crimson LLC to the class of 2022, and $75 from Luters Environmental for, as a general donation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
The second, second, roll call?
Lilly Raymond Reed?
Yes.
David Stokes? Mark Sideris?
Yes.
Kendra Foley?
Yes.
Lindsay Moska?
Yes.
John Portz?
Yes, Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Thank you. Next will be reports, Building for the Future, the elementary school project, Mark, do you want to update?
Yeah, just quickly, we're moving right along with the Hosmer, the Kind of, if you want to take a ride by the Kind of School, you'll now see windows and exteriors in one section of the building. It's really a, a sight to see, and it's moving, it's still on schedule, and we're moving right along with what we were anticipating. The School Building Committee will have an opportunity, two weeks from now, to tour the building as a group, and we'll be able to report after that, what kind of, something that DeeDee has already seen, and, and will be hopefully a little further along, so it should be interesting. We've had some, a couple of neighborhood issues at the Hosmer that we dealt with over New Year's. You know, there's a couple of, the contract that doesn't seem to want to follow some of the rules that are in place, so we've been dealing with the project team, the town, and we've been trying to, you know, keep the neighbors abreast. We've had a couple of neighbors request that maybe we have a meeting with just the neighbors, and we're maybe going to arrange that, so I just wanted to make everyone aware that it's not as smooth a sailing at the Hosmer as it's been at the Kind of. But again, it is a construction site, we're doing the best we can and hope that we can minimize these issues, and we do have some remedies that the building inspector can use to try to minimize the impact on the neighborhood.
And thank you, Mark. The high school, anything to add at this point?
Oh, yes, so, so we're very excited that our preferred schematic report has been submitted to the MSBA, and that happened on the 29th of December. And now the very big next step is, we have to go before the Facilities Assessment Subcommittee And now the very big next step is we have to go before the Facilities Assessment Subcommittee of the MSBA. And basically that is a chance for a subgroup of board to, for lack of a better term, drill us about our educational program and what it is that we want to have, you know, in our new high school so that they feel completely confident supporting the funding, they're part of the funding for the project. So that's actually going to happen on January the 13th. So I'm doing a lot of studying of our educational program. I know it inside and out, but you know, it's been a while since we worked on that. And we're very excited to represent, you know, the future of what we'd like to see for our high school. And I'm looking forward to that next step in the MSBA process. So that's where we're at with the high school project.
Okay.
If I may, John, on the high school. We did have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday night, but that's been canceled because right now we have two cost estimates that have been done. One by the architect and one by the project management team. And there, today they had a meeting and they were reconciling those cost estimates. And they won't be ready, and so there really wasn't a whole lot to discuss. So two weeks from Wednesday, we'll be sharing those cost estimates with the committee and the community. And we'll be sharing a meeting with the elementary school. So anybody that was expecting a meeting on Wednesday for the high school, that's not going to happen.
All right, thanks, Mark. Anything else from Dee Dee from your side?
No, we're just very excited about the forward progress in terms of the high school, so.
Any questions on the building future from the committee? Any questions? Okay, next would be the fiscal '21 budget update. Is Heidi here?
Yeah, Heidi is here.
Thank you. There we go, coming up on the screen. You see the financial status report and the memo for anybody who hasn't had a chance to take a peek or is listening in. Some big news, recently, the, as you know, the stimulus package was signed on or about December 27th. And how that affects the school district is that the grants that were due to expire December 30th, as well as the Towns Cares Grant that was due to expire December 30th, have all been extended to December of next year. So what that's going to allow over the next couple of weeks essentially is that we will look at what we charged in the grant and we may be able to reclass some of that with available savings in our budget and save the grant funds to use potentially next summer for additional programming and into next year. Additionally, there was a small food service grant announced right before Christmas and it expires as well on December 30th, and that's still the timeframe, but it goes backward to March. So we will be able to claim that, that's about thirteen thousand dollars. And that money will go back into the food service account, which is great news. A lot of districts have been hit really hard. We've been doing fairly well on ours, but certainly all the extra expenses to do the food service program as well has had impact. The Easter grant was, was and still is 1231. So the CVRF grant, the Easter grant, and the Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant, which we had mentioned in the fall for about thirty-four thousand, all of those three have been extended. The remote learning technology will still probably be used up right now. That's thirty-three thousand because we had the PON prior to the year turning. So we'll, we'll use that up. So that's a lot of what the memo is about, is that we'll be really taking advantage of the flexibility that's now been put before us, fortunately from the federal government and then through the Massachusetts and DSE. DSE does have control over how we spend our grants and, but they've been working closely with all the districts. A lot of questions because all of these will be audited, both at federal level down to DSE and DSE down to all the districts. So that's been, been happening. As far as our operating budget, aside from what might be reclassed, we still have staff that might be asking to go on leave for the rest of the year and different things. So we still are hiring, Ken's been very busy, Ken's office, hiring Tams and long-term subs, short-term subs, whatever, classroom monitors to help. So we have been putting in those stuff, but we do feel that there's been savings elsewhere in the budget that will offset those costs. And as mentioned prior, we had some building-based subs and a Lowell door monitor and some other positions hired for just this year due to COVID. And we feel that those salaries will probably be largely offset with savings elsewhere in the budget. So the other thing is that we did put in the placeholder purchase order for the prepaid out of district that's allowed, out of district tuition that's allowed under state law. Again, that's a placeholder that we hope that we can always roll that forward, but we determine that up or down at the end of the year. All right. And then, you know, as far as we still have recurring expenses for remote learning or hybrid learning, sending home books, so we have to buy more copies of books so each student has one, take-home kits for projects and things like that. So that's essentially just moving on as it has been for this year. If there's any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Perkins? Open up my window here. Okay, thank you, thank you, Heidi. Next would be the enrollment update, Dr. Golson?
You know, not, not much movement within the enrollment. You know, I think that, you know, anybody who's interested in looking at the enrollment report, we do have it broken down in terms of remote classes and kind of looking at the distribution. Whoops, that's personnel report, that's not the right one, we're going one second. Clicked on the wrong link. And as, as we indicated, you know, we have, I think now about 250 students that are remote at the high school and also at the elementary level and 109 at the middle school level. For some reason, the number's a little bit different and they're, it doesn't matter. The point is, it's interesting in the enrollment report to see those remote classrooms, especially at the elementary level. And remember that when you're looking at it, you'll see that there's some splits. Like we did schedule, for example, a Kineff cohort and a Lowell cohort with like a Lowell teacher. So you'll see some strange Lowell numbers. That doesn't mean that there's only nine kids in the class, just means that there's a cohort within one school that's smaller than the other. But right now, our enrollment is, you know, remaining relatively stable. And it's still, you know, down from last year, but I'm sure that that will rebound once we end up out of the pandemic as well.
Any questions on the enrollment? Okay, see non-personnel?
It is a quiet time in terms of personnel. It's the quiet season. Hopefully soon we'll be able to put something there about the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. But other than that, you can see, as was alluded to from Heidi, we do have a lot of classroom monitors, you know, tutors, et cetera, that we're trying to hire to help support the work that we're doing in the schools.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Did Lindsay have a question? Lindsay has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did, sorry, I couldn't find my button again, I keep closing the participant window. I actually had a quick question about the enrollment one, it kind of popped in my head afterwards. I'm, I'm wondering, and it may not be an answer for right now, but I'm just wondering how, maybe it is because of budget, but how is the district going to try to guess or judge changes in enrollment for next year? Like families that are maybe coming back to the district that went to private school or I like, I know our numbers are lower this year than they have in the past because of some homeschools, some private school and things like that. I'm just kind of wondering, is there any way for us to try to predict who comes back or what are we planning for, for next year, thinking about the budget and staff?
Thank you, Lindsay, that's a very good question. You know, I, I think that we, we certainly have, I mean, to your point, I think that one thing we could do is, you know, just reach out to our families that, you know, were here with us last year and who are no longer with us, just to remind them that if they would like to return, that they should register as soon as possible so that we have the right numbers. But it's always a, I mean, I hate to say it, especially now, I mean, it's hard to predict exactly where people are going to end up. So I think that in theory, I think we're going to have to schedule as if it were last year as opposed to this year, because I think that that's a little bit more predictive of what it's really going to look like. I am, I grow a little concerned about, I think, a lot, a lot of, a large swath of kindergarten gap year people who, you know, for, I think, some various serious reasons, might have chosen not to send their children to kindergarten this year. So I think we could see a pretty big bubble in kindergarten. And that's, that's, you know, no fault of a parent, just to make a decision around, you know, this, this year, and do you want to start your kid in kindergarten? So I think that if I were to say, if I were to predict where I think we're going to see maybe a staffing need, it might be in kindergarten more than anywhere.
Any other questions?
John, I just, I just had one really quick. Did you say there were 250 at the high school, 109 at the middle school, and 250 at the elementary school that are remote? Is that the number?
Sorry, it was off. I should just, I should not just try to say things. Here on the report, you will see that there are 254 at the high school and 295 at the elementary and definitely 109 at the middle school level. That I know.
So that's about, just over, probably around 25% that, of the school population?
Yep. Yeah, we, we ended up with more than, especially at the high school. And I, I have no idea what that is, but maybe my survey will give us some thoughts. But I do believe that my own children, as you probably know, are remote. And I think that the longer you're remote, you've just developed your habits and you're pretty comfortable doing what you're doing. So I think that we went from 9% of people who thought they were going to do virtual school at the high school to, as you can see, over 25% because I think the students were pretty accustomed to their, their learning at home and, and they decided that that's how they wanted to finish out, so at least through February.
Did that number go up after, when, when the high school decided to go, when the high school went back in, I don't remember now? November, was that the, did it fluctuate a little bit then? Because some people decided to stay remote.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we went from, like, and, and I think there was a little bit of a bump even after the first week. Again, I, you know, it was not as anticipated. But then again, middle school's steady in terms of what we thought we were going to have in our virtual school and what we ended up having. So again, they started earlier, they were here, you know, mid-November. So I think there might have been more of an inclination just to, to go in. I'm not completely sure, but certainly it was not anticipated to be so high at the high school.
Any other questions, thoughts? Okay, all right, thank you, Dr. Golson. Next would be school committee chair. So I just want to make a couple of brief comments. This is the first, first meeting for the year, so if, you know, kind of looking, looking for 2022, 2021, what the year looks like, you know, I would say, kind of to state the obvious perhaps, we've got a lot of really important challenges for us this year. And I'm going to just mention a couple of those that I think are going to occupy a lot of our attention. And clearly, the, the first would be dealing with the pandemic and where we go with that, how we adjust to that. I think we've done a really, a very good job so far in doing that. And I thank the administration, superintendent, and all the educators for that. I think there's going to be a lot of issues as we go through the rest of this academic year. Looking at the summer, coming back in the fall, hopefully we'll be able to come back in a more in-person mode. But I think a lot of equity issues are going to come up as well because some students, I think, are going to fall behind more than others in this process. And so, you know, how, as a district, how we go about addressing that from summer into the fall, I think is going to be very important. Another big issue for us this year, we've already talked a little bit about it, is the building for the future. And the elementary schools, the two, the Hosmer and the Kineff are being constructed. And, you know, by the end of this year, sometime in the late fall, the Kineff is likely to be open and ready to go for the kids, that's going to be very exciting. The Lowell will come along very soon, Hosmer next year, towards the end of next year. But then we also have the high school. And this is a big year for the high school because we're, you know, we're looking at the plans now, but the, the target would be to have a debt exclusion vote this fall. And so that's going to be a very important, obviously a very important issue for us as a community, as a school committee, but as a community as well, and how we move forward with that. A third topic that I think is very important, and certainly the superintendent alluded to this today, hiring a director for diversity, equity, and inclusion is a very, raises kind of that issue to a much higher level of profile within the district, as it should, as we try to kind of ensure equity and for all students, create a safe and learning environment for all students and staff, respecting the diversity within our district and indeed celebrating that. I think that's a third big area for us to work on this year. And then I, I would add one more, which I think is, you know, as, at some point, we will move out of this Zoom world. And as we do that, I think it's going to be kind of interesting of how we, how we kind of recalibrate our connections with the community a little bit. Because I do think that, you know, despite all the challenges of the Zoom world, it does create different opportunities to connect and for the community to engage and participate. And if you think back to the one meeting we had in August where we voted on the reopening plans, there were 500 people at that Zoom meeting, 500. I don't think we've ever, school committee has ever had 500 people at anything. So how we, to me, it's really a big issue, how we capture that? How we capture that opportunity for the public to be engaged with our, with the schools? I think that's a really important issue that we'll be grappling with once we kind of move beyond the kind of pandemic closed building mode that we're in at the present time. So, some important issues for us, you know, I look forward to working with all of you and all the people in the administration, the educators, town hall, and the community and parents in trying to address all these important issues. Next would be the superintendent's report.
Excellent, thank you, that was, that was lovely. I would like to thank the school committee chair for providing the community updates after every meeting. I think that's been really quite beneficial for our community to keep, keep abreast of what's happening within the school committee. I think, I'm just saying, this isn't my report, but I think that that's often, I, I find that in Watertown, probably more than any other community, I think that, that people understand kind of what the school committee does, not just from the updates, but I think you're a very involved school committee, which is great and, and really appreciated on so many levels because not, not every superintendent has such an amazing school committee, you know, leading the charge when all is said and done. So thank you very much, and I can't wait for this year, for all the great challenges that we have ahead, but also the amazing successes that we're going to see. So I just wanted to provide just a little bit of an update. We are talking about equity and the hiring of the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. You know, since we last met, you know, I, we had a, actually, I think, I don't know if we had an anti-bias coalition meeting right before that, but anyways, we had an anti-bias coalition meeting. You know, our membership is growing, I think Zoom is definitely helping with that. But certainly, just again, a couple of the major points that, that we are committing to right now as a district, moving forward is that formation of a parent diversity council. You know, that is something that, you know, as, as was discussed with the policy subcommittee, part of the, the function will be to engage our families and our community in terms of, you know, being part of the decision-making process when all is said and done, which I think is, is key. But providing space for our, you know, our, our Black parents, our Brown parents to come together and provide feedback and information to, to me and to the community, I think that's, that's big. The posting for the director, we've been very busy in the last, you know, several weeks in terms of meeting with potential partners to help facilitate our equity work. I've had some of the most engaging conversations with people who are deep in the equity work within different school communities and even outside. You know, I think it's going to be a really monumental decision to figure out who's going to help in the bridge between having the person who's going to be that Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, but help us moving forward because we're not waiting, we can't wait. I mean, this work doesn't wait. So, you know, we need to make sure that we have a good partner to help us move forward. And one of the things that we will, that will come out of this is finding, you know, somebody who will be able to do a deep dive in terms of an equity audit, which really looks at data as well as practices and policies within the district. So that's something that we're also looking to find, somebody who's really knowledgeable and skilled at doing that. So hopefully by the next meeting, we might have some more information to provide to the community. One step that, that the middle school principal has taken is partnering with a gentleman by the name of Carlos Hoyt, just to do some really interim work with the middle school because of the fact that, you know, we've had some, you know, serious incidences there. And I think it's, you know, rather than waiting, you know, he's a great resource that I think will help not only the staff but the students as well. So that is one thing that was shared with the middle school community. So we continue to work on our, our equity work, and I think that that is one of the major focuses for the coming year and many, many years to come as well. But like I said, it's a fascinating journey and I look forward to, you know, continuing that commitment to the work and just learning so much in, in so many ways. So that's why I wanted to share, and happy new year to everybody and may 2021 be, not 2020.
I agree, I agree, thank you, Dr. Golson. New business, any new business? Nope.
I was just going to ask if it would be possible for the school committee to have a retreat relatively soon. We haven't had one this year, and I do think that it would be really helpful for us to come together and talk through some of the norms and procedures and all the kind of stuff that I think we've done in years past that I found really helpful. I would just really love if we could find a time to do that.
Okay. I think it's a good idea, I mean, we usually do one in the summer, but you're right. I mean, this past summer was occupied with other things for sure. But we can try, but we can try to do that, find a time to do that.
Can I just say something?
Good point, yes, that's awesome.
Sorry, so Dr. Beginnis and I actually, and Mrs. Maris had met with, with one, one of the people that could be potentially a provider, who discussed having a session for the school committee as well around, you know, equity. who discussed having a session for the school committee as well around, you know, equity and schools. So I think that that would be really powerful at some point. Doesn't have to be now, it could be in the summer. But as part of a retreat or whatever it might be, I think it would be great for you to be part of that equity process. So.
Okay. Good. Any other new business? Announcements, we have the school building committee meets on January 20th. As Mark said, we don't meet this Wednesday, but we do meet on January 20th. And the school committee next meeting is January 25th at seven o'clock. This is kind of featuring the middle school, although we will be remote probably here. I'm not sure. We will talk about that. Most likely here.
Yes.
We'll see. But it'll be remote either way, but we'll be kind of featuring the, the middle school.
Yep.
Any other announcements? Any others? Public forum, anyone from public wish to speak?
Hello?
Yeah, Mary, you want to speak?
Yep. I don't know if anyone was before me.
Nope, you go, go ahead.
Okay, I, I would just like to thank you. I know sometimes I come off very strong, but I want to compliment all the work that you have been doing. And the transparency has improved very much, which I think is very, very important. My understanding is that on January 25th at 7:00 PM, you will share the Survey Monkey not only with family, staff and students, but also with the community. And I think that's really, really important for transparency. So can you hear me still? Sorry. Also, Superintendent, I'd like to ask you a question just regarding the equity, diversity and inclusion of the director that you are including parents in on that position. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And will there be a committee with parents and community members and students and staff that we can join?
Yes. And I, and actually, that's one of the things that the anti-bias coalition is working on is creating, I'd like to ask for someone, for that group to help create what that process is going to look like. Instead of just following what we've always done, maybe there's a better, that's something that I reached out to that group to help with. But yes.
I think that's really important. And another question is, will that position as Director of Equity, Diversity and Inclusion be under the Watertown Public Schools administration as in regards to salary, reporting back to those sorts of questions?
Yeah, that, that person will report directly to the superintendent.
Okay, so it's only under the school superintendent?
Yeah.
And it would be an administrative position?
Yeah.
Okay. And our next date, like I said.
You have more questions?
No. What?
You should have a conversation with the superintendent about it, learn more details about it.
I would love to. I would love to connect. And like, once again, I'd like to applaud all the school committee and superintendent and Mark Sideris and everyone involved this evening. I think it went very smoothly, especially the transparency with the Hosmer and some of the difficulties that Angie posted out there. So thank you for, for your honesty. And I look forward to hearing more about the architects' bids and stuff that are happening, Mark, at a later date.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else in the public? Okay, so I'll close the public forum and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Show moves.
Second.
Roll call, Amy, please.
Lindsay Mosca?
Yes.
Kendra Foley?
Yeah.
Lilly Raymond Reed?
Yes.
David Stokes? Maxidias?
Yes.
John Ports?
Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Good night, everybody.
Night. Happy new year, everybody.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.